Hi, everybody. Welcome to our South Island City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 7th. Entertain a motion that we officially begin.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll start with a moment of silence. If you join us in that moment of silence, please. After that, Councilmember Stewart will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a couple of presentations tonight. We'll first start with Margaret Rose. She's the executive director of the YCC Family Crisis Center. She presented our WACOG meeting a few months ago, and now is going to the individual cities to let the council know what's what they're they're about.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members, for the opportunity to talk with you here tonight. I wanted to share just some information about kind of the services that we provide at YCC Family Crisis Center. Maybe some of you may or may not be familiar with our services. We support individuals and families impacted by domestic and sexual violence, and we do that through safety advocacy and resources so that they can get back to a safe and healthy life. We are the only service provider in Weber and Morgan Counties. And so the the service providers are divided around the state. There are sixteen of us. We're all independent nonprofits, but we all cover a geographic region of the state so that we're all covered with services. So just to kind of give you an example of Weber County and kind of the the support services that we provide, this is a look back at crime, violent crime, in our community over the last five to six years. And you'll see that those, really all of those offenses are victims that we serve at YCC. So with the exception of maybe the robbery being one, although there's a lot of robbery that also happens in the context of domestic and sexual violence. And so we're providing services on the victim's side, whereas our law enforcement partners are providing, obviously, services on the law enforcement and the judicial side. So our focus is to support victims. One of the, one of the, I guess, the big changes that has happened in the last year in particular is that legislatively, the lethality assessment program was passed into law last July. And what that is, is it's an eleven-question tool that law enforcement uses when they enter, when they respond to a call, a domestic violence call. And they will take the the victim of the call and use this assessment tool. It's research-based. It's been used for about fifteen years, originated in Maryland. The evidence behind this tool is extremely positive in terms of reducing assaults and homicides in particular. And so what it does is it kind of takes the subjectivity out of it for for law enforcement to make a call. So if they are like, well, I can't really decide if this person's at risk, or if they're not at risk, or whatever, this quantifies it, and it takes that sort of decision-making. It complements the decision-making, I would say, for for a law enforcement officer. And so if a person scores or answers affirmatively to some of these questions, it could result in an automatic call to YCC or the service provider in their area and guaranteed shelter, a place in our shelter for victims if they're deemed high-risk. And so that's a key piece, and it really is not just that they're deeming the person high-risk for a chance of lethality, but actually, they're making that call to us and connecting that victim with services. And it's been really, it's been highly successful since since the the start of it. We've been using the lethality assessment for several years, and Ogden Police Department and Weber County sheriffs have been using it for quite a few years. So we haven't seen quite the same bump that the rest of the state did if they weren't using the lethality assessment. But in May and June, knowing that this was coming, law enforcement started using the the LAP program, as we call it. And in in May and June of of 2023, we saw eighteen hundred and eighty-two laps. And then in July alone, when it became law, we saw eleven hundred and sixty-six laps happen. And this was throughout the state. But if you looked at that, in 2022, before it became law, in the entire state, we only had forty-five hundred laps that that were administered. So in one month, we're already at twenty-five percent of those laps. And those numbers have stayed consistent, month in and month out statewide. So this is just a glimpse at the August numbers, where we had over a thousand laps. And sixty-four percent of those have been, were deemed high-risk for lethality. And those numbers have continued throughout, really, well, every month. I'm not going to bore you with every pie chart for every month, but they look very, very similar. And so just to kind of give you a breakdown of what those, kind of what those data look like, I give you a snapshot. And this is from the lethality assessment, just kind of what people are saying is happening to them, is that there, you know, you can see there that people have been threatened, they've been strangled, they believe that their their person will kill them, that they've, that they have a gun, or that they can easily get one, which is a huge indicator, precursor to to death. So strangulation, fortunately, has has become very known in law enforcement and also in our medical community about the damage that lethality does to a person physically, even if there's not, like, you know, like, obvious signs of of struggle or anything. If people have been choked or strangled, the long-term effects are significant. It's also an incredibly strong precursor to lethality. So in fact, one one researcher has said that if a man puts his hands on your neck, he's just let you know that he will kill you at some point. So it's it's that serious of a of an offense, if you will. So we take strangulation extremely seriously with our victims. So to give you an idea of what kind of the numbers that we're seeing at YCC, we served just over twenty-one hundred, almost twenty-two hundred individuals in Ogden City, residing in Ogden City, and then another seventeen fifty, essentially, throughout Weber and Morgan Counties. The top three cities excluding Ogden are Roy, West Haven, North Ogden, and then actually, South Ogden is the fourth one. And I should have pulled those numbers for you, but it's it's almost identical to North Ogden.
Right on population lines.
Yeah, it's 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 very similar. So if we look at, if we look at Ogden on on the left, and then other cities, some outlying counties, and then not reported, in terms of our victims, you'll see that we have essentially ten thousand services that we provide to victims during the course of the year that we don't know where they reside. We do not require people to disclose their previous address or their current address. I've talked with our staff about the importance of gathering that data, but we don't put stipulations on victims coming in. They they're very scared. They're very traumatized, and so we try to limit, like, you know, all of those questions, like, well, where have you been living? Where are you staying? Who are you living with? Like, all of those questions. So we really do try to limit it, be very victim-centered, trauma-informed. And so, but I have been working with our staff to hopefully collect more solid data on where people in our community are residing. I think it's fair to say most people are residing in Ogden City. But definitely, we get a lot of calls to the outlying cities as well. This kind of gives you that snapshot of of the cities outside of Ogden in terms of our, the victims served, just, and this is January through December of 2023. So you can see that South Ogden is the kind of number four on this on this list, at about, I'd say, a hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen victims coming accessing services at YCC.
In 2023.
In 2023, that we know of. And then there's those ten thousand that we don't know of. My guess is they fall probably somewhere, representatively, in the same, in the same distribution. I don't, I don't know why they wouldn't, honestly. So total laps by department, again, you're seeing South Ogden is kind of in the black. I think it's the second one there. I think, I think the lap is somewhat new to the South Ogden Police Department, if I'm not mistaken. And so that's, I think that's probably kind of some of the bump that we see in our increase in demand for services. So across the state, we saw referrals from law enforcement go up eighty-six percent from July 1. So just that going into effect, that law going into effect, had a huge impact on all of the victim services providers. So we, we just got a little tiny bump in appropriation this last legislative session of one million dollars divided by seventeen of us. So it comes out to just under sixty thousand dollars per shelter, which is, it's, every bit helps. You know, you know, call, I'm constantly cobbling together funding, but that was the, to help address the the impact of the of the lethality assessment going into into effect. I think the really, the the silver lining here, and the really good news, is that seventy percent of those individuals who were referred to services actually engaged with services. That's statewide. But at YCC, we have seventy-four percent of our of our victims who came in, who were referred, actually, you know, connected with us and chose to to get services. That means that law enforcement's doing a great job of referring to that, referring to us, and our staff is doing a great job of helping people understand the risks that they are in and and getting them, I think, to feel comfortable with the services. So, and we know that among those, those victims that come in, we have eighty-eight percent who've never engaged with any sort of services prior to that. So that's also good, because if you talk to law enforcement, they will tell you a lot of the domestic violence, there's also repeat calls. And so we're getting people connected who've never interfaced with, maybe with, law enforcement in the past. So it's great. To kind of give you a snapshot of what we've, kind of what we see in the last couple of years, and I will tell you that our, our crisis calls during COVID went off the charts. We fielded over ten thousand crisis calls during, like, the, from the start of the pandemic in, like, 2020, March of 2020, through the end of that year, we had over almost, almost, almost eleven thousand crisis calls, which was just way, 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 way more than what we typically do. It has dropped down some, but not back to pre-pandemic levels. So, you know, you can see FY22 and FY23, our crisis calls were at fifty-six hundred and then bumped up to eighty-one hundred. And it's that, for FY24, we're on track for about that same, just under ten thousand, so. But that kind of gives you an idea of of what kind of the capacity that we have and how many people we're serving each year. In in looking at a partnership, a stronger partnership with the cities, I've, as Mayor Porter mentioned, I've talked to the WACOG group and and all the mayors. I've spoken with the sheriff's group, the the chief's group, a few different city councils. And I think you're the, you're my third one. I've got a couple more to go visit, who've been gracious enough to to allow me to come and and speak to you all. I think what we're looking for is really helping us address the impact that we're seeing, the increase in services, demand for services that we're seeing. We really do view ourselves as kind of an extension of city services, an extension of the police force. And it's really nice for our law enforcement partners to actually, you know, when they take somebody out of a dangerous situation, they know what to do with the perpetrators. They're like, what do, what do we do with the victims? They need help, and there's, they're not, we are the only option. And I'm proud of that, but it's also, there's sort of a reality to that, that it's, it's pretty challenging to meet those those needs. So I think what we can provide the city is the lethality assessment training for law enforcement, for the officers. We have two LAP coordinators at YCC, and they've, they've been, one is a former police officer. And then our other one, Ashley Daniels, has been doing LAP training for probably six or seven years now. And she has trained all of the law enforcement agencies that that were early adopters of of the LAP program. We have the LAP support for victims, obviously. We have twenty-four-seven response. We're open all night, every night. We have our on-scene. Our victim advocates will go on scene and address, you know, help victims on scene as long as it's safe. And they'll conduct the the strangulation exams as well. We have protective order assistance, where we take that away from, or help with it, with law enforcement, if the victim, if law enforcement or the cities don't have victim advocates or law enforcement who can do protective orders, we will do protective orders. We have three different advocates, one bilingual, who will do protective orders with. And those, if you've done those, they're incredibly time-consuming and actually quite difficult to get. So we have good success with those. And then, of course, we have our twenty-four-seven crisis shelter and support for victims that include transportation, clothing, food, shelter, medical care, support groups, therapy, counseling, rental assistance, like, really strong wraparound services. So, but I think the main thing that we're interested in, and the main thing I hope that you're all interested in, is just decreasing the number of those repeat calls for law enforcement. We know that domestic violence calls are the most dangerous calls that law enforcement partners go out on, and that that by doing that, we can, we can decrease the number of assaults and homicides. So getting people connected to services is really key. It's when people are trying to leave their abusive relationship, and the two weeks following are the most dangerous times for them. It's the most time that they're likely, the most likely time that they are to be killed. And then that actually, sadly, continues for two years. So that those two weeks are the highest, and then it continues for another two years. So my goal is to add to our our revenue about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to address the impact, to help support the 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 increase in our need for staffing and our demand on services in terms of shelter and food and clothing, everything that we provide, support groups, counseling, all of that. And so I'm going to each of the cities and asking that countywide, could we look at, based on population, breaking that down, a percentage based on population of each city contributing to our services? And the way that we've done this is not, because I know a lot of, a lot of city council folks have said, well, oh, my gosh, if we donate to this nonprofit, we have to donate to all of them. This isn't a donation. This is a, really, what we've looked at is a police services agreement. And so we provide training, we provide support, and that that kind of that partnership. And I I hope that you won't look at this as a donation and more as a, as a contract, honestly. But the breakdown, this is what it looks like based on the population. These are from the the latest census, and this is, we, these are Weber County data. So if we look at South Ogden here, you have six point five seven percent of the population, and that would be, oh, excuse me, that would be about ninety-eight hundred dollars a year that we would be seeking in support for for services. And then I think just between our group, the law enforcement, and the city, city partnership, I think we can really, you know, collectively, we can really get a solid, hopefully, a solid network of support for victims that can increase their safety. So anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilmember Howard? More comments, questions?
I first wanted to say thank you. Great presentation. I did, I was curious, how, do you know how Davis County, other counties, fund their programs similar? I, I'm a retired law enforcement officer. I've been doing, we did the lethality when I started in 2000.
Yep.
July of 2000.
Yeah.
I was trained on it, exact same form, same, exactly what you, and I'm just curious, how come it took so long to get to other cities, other counties?
You know, Weber County has been doing it for quite a number of years. I I don't know the answer to that, in terms of why it took so long. It's always been voluntary, you know, and so if you feel like maybe domestic violence isn't a problem in your community, or you don't want to be told what to do, maybe, maybe that's been some of the the reluctance. I, you know, I can't speak for some of those those communities. So in in terms of how we're funded, most of the shelters in the state are funded really exactly the same way YCC is. So we, our budget is about sixty percent federal grants, state and federal grants, and then we raise the rest. So it's a big chunk. Our budget this last year is about three point nine million. And, you know, I mean, if you do some math, I can't, I don't know right off the top of my head, but about sixty percent is is state, our state and federal funds, and then the rest we raise. So it's, it's up to us to go out and make that happen. So I've been selling plasma lately, so.
No, I, truly, I appreciate your, your services. I was just curious. And so in Davis County is at the the shelter in
Safe Harbor.
State Harbor, in Caseville.
Yep. So, yeah, we're all independent, but we all work really, really closely together. So we, we will often, if if somebody's not safe in Weber County, and they're, maybe they're trying to get to work, if they have, you know, if they have room in Davis County, and and that makes more sense, if it's safer for them to be there, or maybe they have family in the area, but they can't stay with them. I mean, we, or if we're full and and they have space, you know, we, we work really closely together with all of our, of all our shelters statewide. We send people to St. George, or, you know, to Logan, or wherever there's room, if if they want to kind of relocate, we help them do that. So just trying to keep people safe, yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
I've visited the YCC, and it's a tremendous opportunity there. It's a resource that helps these families out. And and the one thing that is really shocking to me is that eighty-eight percent of the victims never, previously, have been engaged in the services, and that is, that is wide-opening to me. And just as Councilmember Howard, the most dangerous situation for a police officer is domestic violence. They, we see more incidents there. But what I'm looking at is, I look at the individuals that you help, but families. How many families do you assist at the YCC?
You know, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, because right, right now, almost, I, I don't like to say all. I'm going to say, like, right now, we have, like, twenty-two women and twenty-five children in shelter. That's, that's almost always, like, our shelter's sixty-one beds, and a lot of times, we're full, full. But generally, we hover around fifty, fifty-five people in shelter. And that's usually about the breakdown, is twenty-some women and twenty-some kids. It's just almost always. So, you know, we might have maybe six individual women, and the rest have, you know, one, one, two, three, four, five kids with them, so.
I'm, you know, it looked on your chart there that South Ogden is fourth. I would hope that we could work on the program where we could maybe drop down and and reduce, reduce those numbers of a hundred and fifteen individuals that are receiving services there. But how do you go through the training of the officers when they come in to be trained? How do you handle that?
You know, our, our staff member comes to You know, our, our staff member comes to the police officer, to the meetings. And they just, I think it's about a half an hour, 45 minutes, maybe, maybe an hour, not quite an hour. And then they just work with them there. And then they tend to work with those detectives or officers who have been kind of assigned kind of that, that beat. I'm, I'm not in law enforcement, so I don't know all the, all the lingo, right? The hierarchy, but certain officers get more assigned to investigate domestic violence. And so they work really closely with them. But the training is onsite, it's not, we don't have officers come to us, we go to them. We go to every different group.
To the departments then?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
I just had a question. Besides monetary, what else do you ask to be given? Or do you have donations that come in or do you need?
It's, it's a great question. We rely heavily on in-kind donations, mostly household items and new clothing. We tore down our donation center this year and a half ago because we're building a transitional housing project right now, which should end, should be wrapped up this month, actually. So we'll have 14 units onsite for transitional housing. And that two years that I spoke about that were so dangerous for people to leave, when they're leaving, they can stay in our transitional housing for up to two years and still get case management and support. So with those 14 apartments in particular, we also run three different housing programs. And all of those rely on like household items and clothing, some food, small furniture, because we don't have anywhere to store things right now. I think one of the things that we haven't really ever explored, which I think is maybe a possibility, are our services and trying to, you know, it costs us a lot like to have our, our parking lot plowed, as an example, you know, and I think it's a really great option. I'm, I'm not suggesting you do this, I'm just going to throw it out, but like if a city wanted to contribute in a way non-monotarily, directly, like maybe plow the parking lot when it snows, you know, like just put it, put us on your route, that kind of a thing. I think there are other ways that we can be creative about contributing that maybe isn't directly money, but it costs us money, you know, and that might not be a good example, but. It is, you know, it is something that you're, you've got the equipment and the, you know, but.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Margaret. This is great timing. We're just talking budget right now in our work sessions. And so we'll, we'll look at this, see which way the council wants to go on this. So thank you very much. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate the time. Good night.
Our second presentation tonight is from Nate Allen, Executive Director of Utah Approves on Approval Voting. And so I know some other cities have seen this. One of the things that I try to do, because I remember, you know, even as mayor, but as councilmember, sometimes too, residents would say, well, what's this kind of, what's this about I read about in the newspaper? What's this I heard about? Could be anything, but something like this. And for us to be able to have an answer, show that we've been educated on this, we've, we're aware of it, we're either not going to do it, or we're thinking of doing it, or we are going to do it. And I just think that really helps us to be informed on some of the things that are happening out there. And so when Nate emailed, I thought, yeah, it'd be great to find out more about this. So Nate?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Glad to have you.
Yeah, thanks for having me as well. So before I get started, I just kind of want to preface what our ask is tonight. We're not asking that South Ogden opt into using this voting method. We're looking for letters across the state from city councils expressing to the legislature that they would just be interested in seeing this as an option for cities. We've gotten letters from North Ogden and Huntsville so far. And we're working on several other presentations over the next few weeks. So just keep that in mind as I present. But going to this first slide here, you might be wondering what is approval voting? So essentially approval voting just lets voters say yes or no to each candidate on the ballot, rather than yes to just one. You can see an example of an approval voting ballot on the right there. Yes is just filling in the bubble and no is not filling in the bubble. And the candidate with the most yes votes, or in other words, the highest approval rating wins. Going to this next slide here, so how is this different than our current system? Our current system currently plurality voting elects on what we call exclusive support. So usually that's the largest single slice across the population. Well, if we're lucky, we'll see people win races with 40%, usually it's 35, 30%, sometimes even lower, depending on how many candidates are in the race. Approval voting elects based on favorability ratings. So these are the same polls that we usually see in presidential races as they're coming up, where we just see how liked is a candidate across the population. That's what approval voting does, is just make sure that the person who is actually most liked across the population wins the election. The biggest reason that doesn't happen in plurality voting, and I'll talk about this a little bit later on as well, is because of vote splitting. So if you have three candidates in the race and two of those candidates are very similar and represent roughly 60% of the population, and then the other candidate is not like them and only represents about 40% of the population, the vote's going to split between those two people. And the person who doesn't best represent the population ends up winning the election. So that's one of the biggest problems that we're trying to solve. Additionally, oh, if we could just go back for one second, no problem. So additionally, plurality voting tends to favor those candidates with a passionate base of support. So you have to be really passionate about someone to mark them as your absolute favorite. Sometimes you might mark someone who's not your favorite in that lesser of two evil situation. You don't like them, but you like them more than the other evil, and so you pick them as well. Approval voting elects candidates with a broad-based appeal. So not just people that have that largest single slice. And a lot of times it might still be that candidate who has the largest single slice, but it ensures that you also appeal to people in other slices of the population to get a consensus. Candidate who best represents and best reflects the values of the voters for a majority of the population. Lastly, plurality voting works really well when you only have two candidates in a race. That's because you don't feature vote splitting there. Makes a lot of sense. If you only have two candidates, you would just pick the one that you like the most. When we add more candidates into the race, that's when we see vote splitting occur and a lot of other weird things start to happen with voting methods. And approval voting solves that issue very simply. I'm going on to the next slide here. What I'll talk about today is why approval voting. So just a quick summary at the top here, it better reflects voter values, as I've mentioned. It produces those broadly supported consensus winners. It limits vote splitting and spoiled elections. It's incredibly cost-effective. There's also cost savings, which are a possibility if you eliminate your primary election. The largest reason that we host primary elections is to narrow down the field so that we don't have to worry about vote splitting in the general and we make sure we're picking the right person. With approval voting, because it solves that issue, you can just do the election all at once. And I know South Ogden hasn't done a primary election in a few years now, but if that ever does come up and you have enough candidates to host a primary election, there is potential for cost savings in that area. Additionally, it's secure, transparent, easily audited, very simple and easy to administer and explain to voters. And ultimately, it's more expressive because you can say your opinion on every candidate, rather than having to narrow down to just saying yes to just one. Going on to this next one here. So you can see some polls, or these are results for elections on the right here. The plurality election featured is the 2020 gubernatorial primary, where Governor Cox was elected as a Republican candidate. He won that primary with 36% of the vote. Close second was John Huntsman with 35% of the vote. On the right is an approval voting election. It was used in 2021 and is still used in St. Louis, Missouri. The winner, Tashara Jones, won with 57%. Kara Spencer won with 46, or came in second with 46. And Louis Reed came in third place with 39% of the vote. One thing to point out there is all three of those top candidates had a higher percentage than Governor Cox. And we're not saying that Governor Cox wouldn't have won this race. It's likely that he would have won with much more. His approval rating is quite high in the state. And why that's important is because when you have people that win with high percentages, especially majority, they have a strong mandate to lead. And not only does that give the candidate confidence that they best represent the voters, but it also gives the voters confidence that that candidate best represents them. And so you don't see as many complaints as, oh, well, they only represent that slice of the population. They don't represent me. That's not my candidate. It makes people accept the election a lot more because they can see that they actually are the most representative of the entire population. Additionally, approval voting shows these true levels of support. So again, Governor Cox probably had like a lot higher, probably would have gotten more than a majority of votes. But we didn't know that after the election. We just saw that he won with 36% of the vote. And so that's something that right after the election, we can be more confident in our winners. No splitting the vote basically leads to broadly supported candidates. So somebody, again, who is most representative, multiple voting slices, rather than that largest single slice, which is a plurality, but not a majority. Additionally, candidates have a very simple strategy, which is just to appeal to as many people as possible. You can go to a voter who may have already heard of another candidate and just tell them, well, you like this candidate, but you can vote for me as well because I'm very similar to them and I have a lot of the same policies. You don't have to negatively campaign and convince them not to vote for that person if they like both of you. Additionally, something that we saw as a big problem with ranked choice voting over the past few years in the state was that people were, or candidates specifically, were complaining that they had to explain the voting method more than they were actually campaigning on their issues. Since approval voting is so simple, we haven't seen complaints about that where approval voting has been used so far.
Do you see other advantages over ranked choice voting besides that?
Yeah, I will get to the cost savings and some simplicity. Here in the next couple of slides on that. Going on to this next one here, this is just a computer simulation, actually a great timed question. This is a complex computer simulation that attempts to simulate what voters care about in candidate positions and try to understand what the results will be under each of these systems. You can see here that under our current system plurality voting, it's very simple on this matrix. And the voter satisfaction is not very good, though. And this is just because when you have multiple candidates in the race, you feature vote splitting. Instant runoff voting, otherwise known as ranked choice voting, can have higher voter satisfaction. It's a big range, though. Sometimes it can be better. Sometimes it can be as good or worse than plurality voting. We like approval voting because it has this tighter window to always guarantee better results. So you get better voter confidence in the system. But additionally, instant runoff voting is quite a bit more complex. And so you see it ranks lower on the simplicity scale there. Approval voting is very high on that simplicity. You could even say it's even simpler than our current system. One of the biggest reasons that ballots get spoiled in our current election system is because people overvote and they say, I like these two candidates. And you can't do that in plurality voting. So you don't have to worry about that in approval. You just say who you like and don't fill in the bubble for who you don't like. But additionally, it does very well in voter satisfaction. And voter satisfaction basically just means how happy voters are after the election with the result. And so perfect system is going to maximize that magic best winner line. That's basically impossible. You're never going to have 100% of people happy with the election, but you just want to make that number go as high as possible. Going on to this next slide, it's the security administration part. So one of the biggest things that we like about approval voting is that it's precinct summable. So it works with our current system across the state. Basically, precinct summable just means that we're able to count all of the votes in individual locations that they're cast. We don't have to send them to a central location. That is something that we have to do with ranked choice voting. You either have to truck paper ballots to a central location or transmit them electronically, the raw ballot data, which basically just creates a single weak point for security. This is compatible with the system that we already use. So votes are still cast in the individual locations and then the total numbers are sent to that reporting location. For that reason, the county clerks have stated that approval voting is the only alternative voting method that has an audit trail that they're comfortable with. Ricky Hatch, the Weber County clerk, is very supportive of implementing approval voting if cities want to try it. We've had extensive conversations with him. We've also talked with Ryan Cowley at the State Elections Office and he's said similar things. Again, it doesn't change the role of their office. So that's why they're more okay with implementing a method like this, rather than ranked choice voting or other alternatives. I also mentioned the fewer spoiled ballots on the last slide, but again, overvoting is the biggest reason for spoiled ballots. So you make sure that every vote that's cast gets counted, unless they do something weird like scribble on their ballot or tear to shreds and send in the mail or something like that. Going on to this next slide here, cost effectiveness. So one of the biggest benefits in a procedural sense of approval voting is that you don't need new voting machines or software. It's compatible with the same voting machines and software that we already use. That's because it's very similar to the city council races that we already run, where people can mark more than one person on their ballot. Basically, instead of just saying vote for up to three, it just says, mark all the names that you like. So the software and the voting machines already work with this type of voting method. Additionally, the ballot size stays the same. That was another big problem with ranked choice voting, was that the ballot size took up the whole length of the paper because you had to have all the bubbles for the ranking of each candidate. Currently, in most ballots, we split it down the middle and so you can have races on the left and races on the right. So basically ranked choice voting was doubling the size of ballots. And that was actually very expensive for counties to pay for the postage because of the increased weight of the paper. So simple things like that make a big difference. But approval voting, like you saw at the beginning, the only change is to that instruction line. So there's not a big change to the ballot. So it's very simple to administer for counties. Additionally, voter education is extremely cost-efficient and simple. So I mentioned earlier, candidates don't need to explain the method. But additionally, because it's such a simple change to that instruction line, rather than changing the entire look and feel of the ballot, it's very simple and cost-efficient. I did some estimates. This is based on the population of South Ogden. But with, with other cities that have used ranked choice voting, the cost would be roughly about $25,000. It's about a third of that with approval voting, so about $8,400 in South Ogden. Additionally, we're very passionate about this method. We'd love to see it used. And so we would, of course, be doing our own independent voter education. And it would be up to the city to analyze how much more would be needed. But our hope is that that would try to reduce some of the cost on the voters and the taxpayer. This last thing here is that there's no additional cost for administration like ranked choice voting. So that chart at the bottom there was a chart that we got from the county clerks on how much it would cost for each participating municipality in a county to use ranked choice voting. The more cities that opted into ranked choice voting, that cost got cheaper. But being that first city is very scary. It's a $36,000 cost upfront. There's no such cost with approval voting. The biggest reason for that is the software, the mail-in balloting, the new voting machines. All of that's still just compatible with our current system. So there's no additional cost at all like ranked choice voting. Next slide here, okay, this is the last one before our summary slide. So where has approval voting been used so far? In the U.S., it's been used in St. Louis, as I mentioned earlier, and also Fargo, North Dakota was the first place to pass it. Approval voting is about as old as democracy itself, though. They used it in ancient Greece. Venice, Italy has used it. It's used to elect the Pope in the PayPal conclaves. The UN General Secretary is elected using approval voting. And this voting method is even used in the NFL and MLB Hall of Fame voting ballots. So it's very widely understood already. Oh, and then on this, the right side here, this is just an exit poll for people that use this in St. Louis. They said instructions were clear, easily understood. They felt the method was easy to use. They liked it. They wanted to expand its use. The election was more positive. And you'll see even on that bottom one where the election was more positive, only 49% of people said that. Still 36% of people said it was neutral. So, you know, less than a third or even a quarter of people said no on any of these questions. So lastly, to the summary slide that's next here. Basically, just summarizing everything I said today. So approval voting is the lowest cost out of these three systems. It produces that highest winning percentage. The voter satisfaction is very high. Ballot spoilage is low. We don't need the new voting software. The ballot size stays small. Counting complexity is low for the machines, precinct summable. And it's moderate in voter education because, of course, it is a change, but not as big of a change as ranked choice voting. And I'll take any questions.
So Nate, if there's five people running for three council spots, you just run it one time? The three that get the most yes votes are in, right?
Yep, is that's exactly right.
Other questions? No one in Utah is committed to go for it yet, huh?
Not yet. So we have to go through the legislature, basically, to.
Make it an option.
Yeah, make it an option, just like ranked choice. So they, we're actually working with them in the interim session right now with the Government Operations Committee. Approval voting is going to be studied over the summer. And so we're just trying to get as many city letters as possible to show that there's interest. And then if it is added as an option, we'd love to come back and talk more about the specifics of that for South Ogden. But again, signing this letter wouldn't opt you in. It would just show that there's interest in this being an option.
Have St. Louis and Fargo done it more than one cycle?
Yeah, each of them have done two cycles so far.
And they plan to keep it?
Yeah, they're still enjoying it, still continuing to use it.
Okay, any other questions for Nate? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll follow up with some additional materials and I'll follow up in a couple of weeks as well to see what your thoughts about the letter are.
All right, time for public comment. Anybody watching online, you can also voice your public comment. Give you until 7:00, according to my phone clock. Just put public comment and then your comment as if you were here in chambers. Item five, our consent agenda. There's three parts there. Approval of our March 19th and April 2nd city council minutes. Also, the advice and consent of the appointment of Norbert Didier to the Planning Commission. He wanted to come tonight. He has already planned to go, I think, to Illinois to his mom's 90th birthday party. So that was already planned, but I met with him and you saw his. But I met with him and you saw his resume and such. I think he'll be great. And then item C, set a date for a public hearing, June 18th. If no property tax increases anticipated or August 6th, if the city goes through the truth and taxation process to increase private taxes, to receive consent or comment on the fiscal year 2025 budget. Any questions, adjustments, corrections on the consent agenda?
I think the item that I was mostly interested in, in the truth and taxation, it gave us a greater transparency to the public about what our budget is actually looking like and gives them an opportunity to voice their concern or their suggestions. And I think that's a positive entity to it.
Okay. Anything else? Can you maintain a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any other questions? Councilmember Stewart.
So, are you, is it setting the public hearing for June or August, or we're waiting to see?
This allows us to do either, is that correct, the way this is worded? Or do we have to pick one tonight? Okay.
The state statute says that we have to set the date for the public hearing on the night that we adopt the tentative budget. And so, since we don't know, we put the option of either/or down.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Our first discussion action items, consideration of Resolution 24-09, approving any local agreement with Weber County for use of Ramp grant funds. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, ma'am. The city was fortunate this year to be awarded two Ramp grants. One for, I had a typo in my report, my email. I think I put $16,000 for South Ogden Days. It was actually a $15,000 award from Ramp to help with our South Ogden Days. And then, we were also awarded $193,000 for the Fields at Birch Creek Park project. So this is the standard resolution agreement stating that we will abide by Ramp's rules and regulations and how we spend the money and report back to Ramp. And so, staff would recommend approval of Resolution 24-09.
We also got 2,000 EZ Grant this week. Is that, just for your information, I don't think we have to approve that one, but for Friendship Park amenities, so that was pronounced last night? Any questions about Ramp?
I believe that this resolution says that it will also approve the funding for an EZ Grant if we receive them.
Okay, good, I didn't see that.
With the Ramp, is there any particular time when we have to spend that money? Do we have to do it in the calendar year, or how do they proceed with that?
So, they do hope that we move forward. There have been years, particularly during the COVID time, where projects got significantly delayed. But they've been really good to work with. In the event that things are delayed, we just send them a letter and an update and let them know, hey, we're still moving forward, but here's where we're at. So they do expect some progress reports. And we have extended a few projects in the past because of timing, but they've been really good to work with, so.
Councilmember Stewart?
So if the correct amount is 15,000, then we need to change the number on page 36 because it says 16,000, and on page 43 it says 15,000.
Doug, do you remember? Was it 15 or was it 16,000 that we were awarded?
So whatever...
It's in the resolution they sent us.
The resolution says...
What page was that?
Yeah, let's look at those. What page?
Their side that they sent to us, page 43, says 15,000. Our side says, on page 36, says 16,000. On page 36, it's the third whereas.
So the amount in the agreement from Ramp is the 15,000? Because we, did we prepare the resolution, Lisa, or did it come already prepared from Ramp?
We prepared the resolution.
Okay, okay.
So what the contract says, the county gave us, that's the...
So it should be 15,000 throughout, so thank you for that catch. We'll have to just make that change on the resolution before the mayor signs it.
Any other questions? Okay, entertain marginally approve Resolution 24-09. Making sure it says 15,000.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call about Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Very good. Item B, consideration of Resolution 24-10, adopting the fiscal year 2025 tentative budget. Mr. Dixon, Mr. Leversbach, both?
Steve, if you want to... And this was covered for the public's benefit that may be listening or listen to this in the future. This was discussed in the work session prior to this regular meeting where Finance Director Steve went through the highlights of what's contained in the tentative budget. And I'm sure Steve would be happy to respond to any questions you have, Mayor and Councilman.
He would be happy to respond. He loves it.
Are there any questions that didn't get addressed from the work session that you want to have addressed initially? Okay. I think in regards to part of the discussion that was had, when it was questioned as to why we're doing a 3% cut on operational expenses, if you look at the revenue projections, you'll notice that, other than the current projection for property tax, most of them are either stagnant or decreasing. So, the current economic environment isn't similar to what it was a year ago or two years ago or three years ago. For example, the largest revenue tax item the city experiences is sales tax. Three years ago, we recognized a 14% increase year over year. The year after that, it was 10%. Last year, it was 4%. Currently, based on the limited data that we have, fiscal year 24 is 1.1% over fiscal year 23. Fiscal year 24's budget is 5.8% higher than what it was in fiscal year 23. So we'll be fortunate if we even make what we've budgeted in the current fiscal year in regards to sales tax. So going forward, at this point, the calculation utilized there was, because I only have seven months of actual data, and projecting that forward myself, and I think Matt as well, we've all been to some, perhaps you as well, at your Utah League of Cities and Towns, economic discussions by local economists. And the ones that I've been at have indicated they're anticipating sales tax to slow down considerably from what we've experienced in the last two, three years. That is being worked into the budget at this point. Obviously, if we're able to get more current information, that changes as we go through the process. At this point, whether it be sales tax, Prop 1, municipal energy, franchise, that is based off of seven months of data. It's only getting us through January. So, that alone, for example, on the sales tax revenue, fiscal year 25 is $263,000 less than what the current year budget is. Is that how it's going to play out? I don't know. But that's what the, kind of, we're being led to believe as far as the economy goes from a state perspective. So those are some of the reasons that, as this has been put together, some of the assumptions that have been made were made. They weren't just randomly selected to be done. There's usually always a reason for those types of assumptions, and that is just a little bit more in-depth for your understanding as to the operational discussion we had and also as you look at revenue projections for the upcoming fiscal year. Having said that, also with the data that was presented by John's Department for Potential Projects, those projects will be funded at some point, whether it be next fiscal year or in the future, through the utility rate structure. So that is something also that you need to be considering. Last year, the only fee increase was in the water fund. The year before that, the only fee increase was in the garbage fund. So just a little bit of historical data there for you on that. But all things that you will need to consider as these work sessions are planned and come about, so. At that, I don't know if there's something specific that you want to talk about or not. If not, that's fine. We can move on to the next agenda item, and I can go home, but it's your call.
Any other questions? Appreciate you. Oh, Councilmember...
Real quick, Steve, is there any advantage or disadvantage to take that fire truck out of this budget, even though we know it's a wash? Should we include that in our tentative budget, knowing that it's going to be a 2025 expenditure?
Actually, it's going to be a '26 expenditure.
A '26 expenditure, yeah.
If they're telling us right now that they believe that item is not going to be delivered until September of '25, it needs to be pulled out because this budget should only represent the fiscal year activity that is expected and reliably believed to happen.
Cool, thanks. That's kind of what I presumed.
So if we pull it out, will we have a conversation on how we're looking at funding that vehicle then, or is that, should we talk about in the budget that applies to that year?
Well, no, I believe you need to discuss the funding of it 24 months ago. But you definitely need to address that because if you're pulling a $1.9 million expenditure out, are you wanting to then use the ARPA monies in the future to pay for that, or are you wanting to do some other financing or funding for that piece of equipment? Yes, that discussion definitely needs to happen because even though the item's coming out of this budget, you know it's going to be in next year's budget, and to not prepare for a $2 million expenditure...
Is it too simplistic to say we take it out, believe everything else the same, and then that much just rolls into fund balance for the next year when we then can pull it out and spend it?
Actually, the ARPA money isn't...
So that's ARPA that we'd use for that?
Well, there again...
That's your suggestion.
I'm making the presumption that you want to use ARPA money for this. The ARPA money actually is not accounted for in the fund balance.
Let's put that in the budget.
You might.
But Mayor, I think that ought to be the discussion we ought to review to make sure we know exactly what we're looking at going forward in the future.
ARPA carry is over for that long still, right?
Well, I think that's what Steve's saying.
As long as you're a mayor market for that.
Sorry, Mayor, I think that's what Steve is saying, though. If we, we need to determine whether or not we're going to use the ARPA money for that truck. If we do determine that the ARPA money gets used for the truck, it'll still be there, but we can pull it out of this budget.
That's right.
Okay.
But it's important for us to have that type of discussion.
Initially, we had decided to droop that ARPA money for that.
Right, and that's... Yeah, if the previous council decided that that's what they were going to use it for, then we should still use it for it.
Right.
Not even sure it's open for discussion, but...
And I don't know that that was ever officially decided by the council.
Steve?
I don't recall that it was, but...
Yeah, we've talked about, in the past, about options.
It was head nod official.
Yeah, so as of tonight, I will make it as what I interpret to be official. That is your desire.
With the idea that it'll come out of this budget, but also we have until the end of December of this year to officially say, "This is how we're going to allocate the funds."
Yeah, they have to be, yes, they have to be encumbered by December 31st, but there's also a reporting process that has to take place, so I would advise you to not wait till December 31st.
But worst-case scenario, if they change...
At 11:59. We'll go Christmas Eve.
Could I just add one more comment since I have my mic on? And I'll shut it off, get interference. I guess, too, to the extent you, as a council, are comfortable giving direction on the truth and taxation process, doesn't necessarily have to happen tonight, but if you're in a position where you know which way you're leaning, I think you could adopt the tentative budget with direction to staff that, yes, please inform the county that we intend to go through the truth and taxation process. So I would just recommend if you're to that point, that you add that to the motion when you approve the budget. That would give clear direction to staff on what your intentions are.
Okay.
You're asking about the consent agenda?
Yes, I am, because I listened to it upstairs, and I was confused. Because if you want to do truth and taxation, I have to notify the county.
So you'd like to know tonight?
Well, I think that's probably the best direction so that, because if you don't, you've only got till the end of June to adopt this budget. And as staff, that's only six weeks away. So, I think, yes, it would be very helpful if we knew one way or the other tonight at this point.
Those are four nods in the other room, at least. Three or four nods to go through truth and taxation. That's what I was under the impression of, so.
We should make that a motion because in our consent agenda, it was either/or. And if, is that not right, Lisa?
The date for the public hearing was or. So, if you, head nods are really not good for a record.
Well, that's direction for a council.
How do you put those in the minutes?
For staff. So do you want to add that? Can I add it to the Resolution 24-10?
So, this is really direction for staff and basically, because we need to know to complete the budget.
Right, that's why we head nod for direction and then we vote for approval of things.
Yeah, you don't have to have a vote on the agenda if it's, because it's about the budget, and the budget's on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess in my mind, a motion to approve the tentative budget with direction to staff that we intend to go through truth and taxation would be the motion.
That would be great.
Yeah. And with Councilmember Howe's suggestion that the tentative budget, we remove...
The fire truck.
The ARPA funding for the fire truck since it's not going to happen in this fiscal year.
It's important for us to have that discussion during that time for the budget so that we know exactly how we're going to fund it into the future.
Councilmember Stewart?
I think Steve took it as you are going to use it, so.
And I guess that's what I would, my question is, do you want us to say as part of it, "I would like the funding for the fire truck to be with ARPA money"? Are you asking that we, or are we wanting a whole separate conversation about... Are you asking that we, or are we wanting a whole separate conversation about it? I don't know.
Well, um, if we're going to pull it from the budget, then it won't be part of the budget, but we still need to talk about it, how it's going to be funded.
It's the ARPA just one year later.
Yeah, just because we pull it from the budget doesn't mean that it's not being paid for with ARPA funds.
Yeah. But we ought to discuss that, how, how we're going to fund that. If it's going to be ARPA funding, then, then we can talk about that when we talk about the budget and put that part of the budget process.
I believe everybody's planning on ARPA funding.
This is a tentative anyway, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, entertain a motion that we approve. Resolution 24 dash 10, adopt the fiscal year 25 tentative budget with plans to do truth and taxation. So that public hearing would be August 6th.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Mr. Dixon.
With the removal of.
With the removal, oh, yeah.
Well, that can happen anytime.
Okay.
That's true.
Yeah. So we're good. Any further discussion? Real couple, Councilwoman Howe.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smythe.
Yes.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stewart.
Yes.
Thanks, thank you, Steve. Appreciate your time on that. Item seek, oh, there is no public comment online, so there won't be any of that today. Consideration of Resolution 24 dash 11, ratifying agreement with Spawn Ranch for construction of the Fortieth Street Skate Park. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully you read my email, just gave a, actually, did I do that? I should have given you some background on this in my email. Was it January, December? In December, you approved a, a contract with Spawn Ranch for the construction of the Fortieth Street Skate Park. Between council's approval and having the agreement fully executed and signed by, uh, Spawn Ranch, their legal team said, hey, in your standard contract, which is what we use for all of our projects, it talks about and other general terms and conditions. And they said, we want to see a copy of what that is. What are your other general terms and conditions? Which, funny, in all the years, we've never had anyone actually request that. So our engineering department said, oh, yeah, yeah, we have those, here they are, and sent it to them. To which they responded with a big email of, hey, we recommend that this be changed and this be changed and this be changed. And our engineer said, you know what? In lieu of us changing our general terms and conditions for one contract, we simply said, Spawn Ranch, why don't you send us a contract that you've used and that you're comfortable with? And we'll review it to see if it meets our needs versus us spending the time and money to change all that. So that's what took place. They, it took them some time. They produced what is before you tonight. It had been, uh, has been reviewed by, uh, Mr. Anderson as well as our engineers to say, we're comfortable with this, let's move forward. Nothing else is changing, the amount is the same. We are, we are anticipating a groundbreaking in the coming weeks, uh, waiting on. So things really haven't been delayed, even though it's taken a while to get them to the point where, okay, we're in agreement. So because it is not the same agreement that you approved in December, thanks Lisa for pointing that out, we've brought it back to you for your reconsideration and approval of this as the new contract with Spawn Ranch. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, good explanation. Any more questions on that? Okay, entertain a motion that we approve, Resolution 24 dash 11.
So move.
Second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Howe. Awesome. D, consideration of Resolution 24 dash 12, ratifying the purchase of five fleet vehicles and approving the purchase of 10 fleet vehicles. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Also in my report, I tried to lay out some of the, the history. I don't intend to rehash all of that. I think suffice it to say that we've been struggling for the last few years. Mr. Anderson, who's over our fleet, um, has been hoping that we could get to the point as a city where essentially we, we cut out the middleman, where we as a city purchase the vehicles through state contracts that several dealers have. And then we also would then, um, trade in those vehicles after a year or two, purchase new vehicles and continue with that rotation. It's, it makes a lot of sense financially for the city. Those vehicles always stay on warranty. As you know, we've been leasing these vehicles, but there's, there's always been a third party to help facilitate that. We haven't had great experiences with the third parties. To the point where the most recent, uh, company we've been leasing with was discovered that, hey, look, uh, you're going to owe us a bunch of money because, um, of the contract says if we sell the vehicles and we get less than what we had hoped initially when you signed the lease agreement, that that would be a charge back to you as a city. So once again, unfortunately, we were scrambling to say, okay, what's the best way to avoid taking the hit, so to speak, on these vehicles where we're upside down? That, this all started back in January, maybe even December, where we knew that, hey, this was coming. We had five vehicles come due in February. We have nine coming due this month in another week or two. And then one more vehicle in like July. So in an effort, as we were gathering finance, uh, financing bids from Zion's and other, um, financial institutions, we were, because of the five vehicles that were up in February, the company was basically saying, we really need to either come grab, get those vehicles or you need to pay us for those vehicles. And we were mentioning to them, hey, we're trying to figure out our financing for all 15 and what we're going to do. With added pressure from them saying, you know what? The contract allows us to really charge you some significant fees for being off lease. We, uh, we made the decision internally administratively to say, let's just pay them for the five vehicles with city cash, knowing that we will be reimbursed through the financing for the total other vehicle package in an effort to avoid additional fees and penalties for the five vehicles that were off, off lease. Having said all of that, um, the recommendation moving forward is, uh, well, let me back up. This resolution, um, ratifies the decision made to purchase five vehicles and, um, also states we have Zion's Bank who were the, they were the most competitive when it came to the, the financing for the project. They're right now in the process of preparing all of the documents that will be on your next city council agenda. But because we went ahead and purchased the five, talking to Lisa, I'm like, I want a resolution that kind of lays out, here's where we've been and this is where, where we're at, to try and clarify for you as well as the public, you know, this is, this is what's going on. I think I covered everything, John, anything I've missed? Our goal and desire, again, talking with John and our fleet, the direction we're going is we have, we will be purchasing these vehicles from the current leasing agency. We will trade those vehicles in. Ken Garf has, uh, they are putting together a, um, vehicle buyback agreement where they've given us a minimum. If the market is better in two years, then we will benefit from that. But they have said in a, at a minimum, here's what we will purchase those vehicles from you. That was the most predictable option for us, in, in my opinion and Steve's opinion. There were other options that had less unknowns in two years to say, well, if the market's good, you could, we could have, we could have done well or we could have added to our, to our pain. If the market was dropping for used vehicles, um, we would, it would end up costing us even more to get out from under these. So our goal as staff and our hope would be in two years when these come off lease through Ken Garf, that we put the city in a position where we can do this on our own, working with dealerships, buying and then selling and keeping our fleet under warranty and, and up to date. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have a question, why aren't we working with local? Why Ken Garf in Salt Lake?
It's a great question. We've worked with, because there are, uh, local dealerships that have state contracts for sure.
Have state contracts?
Yes, that, so the state vets all kinds of goods and services. And then they award contracts. So the same, the same price that we can buy from Ken Garf through state contract would be the same price we could buy from Young Automotive under state contract. It's a, it's in a guaranteed, this is the, this is the price. So it doesn't necessarily cost us any more or less to work with Ken Garf. But your point is well made. If we have the option to work with local dealerships, particularly that the Young Automotive Group is.
And in two years, we'll highly consider that option.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, please. Uh, first of all, let me start off by saying that if we per, if the city purchased vehicles through the Young Automotive Group, that's our government and fleet team and I get no financial compensation for that. So the, there, there's, I just want to make that clear that I'm, I'm arguing for the company I work for. However, I don't get paid for it. Um, a couple of things.
But thank you for clarifying that. That's probably something, anything we have discussions about Young, just.
It's important, yeah, yeah.
Potential conflict.
Because they do business in our city, right? I want to make sure that we, that I defend Mr. Dixon a little bit. The, nobody would have predicted that during COVID would have record sales in the automotive industry. And nobody would predict when we came out of COVID that would have record depreciation of used vehicles. The contract that he signed for the city a couple of years ago is a very typical contract. It, it's an open-ended lease agreement where, uh, the city's responsible for the, for the disposition of the vehicles. Or if the leasing company disposes of the vehicles, the city's responsible for any, any, uh, differences. So that's a pretty typical contract. There's only a few, well, there's a handful, probably four or five companies that deal with municipality leasing. And almost all of them save but one that I can think of has that same type of a contract. So there, there's, there's nothing that we could have predicted that would have made it so we wouldn't have this expenditure, uh, come up when we dispose of the vehicles. That being said, also to Mr. Dixon's point, state bid contracting is, is across the board equal. It's supposed to be, that's the way it's designed. My concern is twofold. One, the buyback program that Mr. Dixon is talking about requires you to repurchase vehicles through the same dealership. And there's, Young Automotive has the same buyback program and then that's the way we write ours too. Uh, the second thing is, I'm concerned with the resolution because it doesn't dictate the trade-in values of those vehicles that we're spending money on to purchase. And those trade-in values, now that is where the difference would be. That's where a dealership will sell you a vehicle on the state bid contract, so it's a fixed price. But one dealership may give you $40,000 as a trade-in vehicle. The other dealership may give you 45 as, as a trade-in value. We haven't seen those trade-in values. So currently, as the resolution's written, I'm opposed to it. There's ways to work around that and I know we need to get the funds to, to the leasing company ASAP if we haven't already. But, but I, I really would like to see the numbers on, again, no compensation here whether we sell them through Young or not, but I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the budget of the city.
Would that be in this resolution or would that be in the next one?
So Councilmember Howe, it's my understanding that in addition to the financing agreement that will come from Zion's, we will also have Ken Garf's agreement where all of that should be outlined. Steve and I have already seen the purchase contracts for these vehicles from Ken Garf, which says, here's the value. And we should have, uh, a list and a breakdown to identify what the buyback amounts are.
And I think that's what I'd like to see, just whether or not we buy them from Ken Garf or, or Young's or whoever else has state bid. But I'd like to see those numbers. The, the question I had on the resolution, I'm trying to pull it back up where I saw it was.
And if you find the page, yell it out.
Yeah, I'm on 167 so far, but. Am I not?
Uh, 107?
I'm sorry, 107.
Yep, I'm on 107.
That's why I wear these readers and they still don't work.
I went to the right part.
The, the only thing I think I saw in here was, was that we're, we are ratifying that we are purchasing vehicles and trading vehicles in. And, and until I see those numbers, I'm not sure I, I want it. I want to ratify those. I also, uh, did it get talked in here about, okay, so it ratifies the purchase of five leased vehicles, approve the purchase of 10 of vehicles. I, I don't approve the purchase of the 10 leased vehicles yet until we see those trade-in numbers.
Yep.
And that's just me, I, it's, the rest of the council can vote as they, they desire, but.
No, Mayor, my response to that would be, that could simply be taken out of this. This is a resolution I just recommended we put together to try and establish for the public record, here's where we're at dealing with these, these fleet decisions. There's no intention here to, to, to lock you in because the, the real contracts that will lock us in as a city will be the, the financing agreement with Zion's and the Ken Garf. So I'm, whatever changes you feel like you want to make to this resolution is, is, is fine.
I have a question on this too, and I think I've asked before. Are we tied in with Zion for financing? Is that also a state contract?
No, we're not tied in, but we, we, uh, we did solicit some, um, some proposals from financing entities to say, hey, we need, we need a lease or a financing agreement for fleet. And Zion's had the most competitive interest rate and terms.
Did you go to credit union?
No.
Well, and that's, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And the municipality go to a credit union?
I don't know.
Why not?
There's no difference. It's a lending business.
Yeah, I don't. The difference here i- in is that Zion's offers a lease program. It leases as different from purchases. The credit unions do not offer, offer a lease program. But like I said, there's only a handful, four or five banks around here that, that allow leasing, especially in what they call a track lease or an open-ended lease in, in this regard. And I, and I don't know if Zion's Bank has a track lease. Would have to take a look at that and see what the, the terms are. It's the, it's the, it's the gamble that a city takes on maintaining their vehicles and the future expectation value of that vehicle that is a benefit of leasing. But in this case, as, as we saw the depreciation of assets, it was not the best case in, in this one. And, and the city could purchase the vehicles. You know, they could do a, a, a two-year contract or a three-year contract if they wanted to. Most municipalities lease.
Mr. Dixon, was it your intent of this resolution though, was the fact that we've bought these already?
Well, we definitely.
And to approve that, ratify that we've bought these?
We definitely do that, yes.
And so the other language could be added or we could?
Yep.
Take that part out?
For sure. And Councilmember Howe, I'd be curious, uh, we could talk after.
Sure.
About, um, your comment about the, typically those buyback agreements, because you're familiar with those, require that the repurchase be from that dealership.
Correct.
Be curious to know if there's a way to say, yeah, we don't want to lock ourselves into that.
There certainly is, and, and again, we can talk about it later, but it's, it's pretty typical.
So how do we amend this resolution to get where we want it to be?
Well, I think Councilmember Howe has, um, which, I'm trying to find it.
So I'm on 108 now. And the first whereas and the second whereas, I don't think I would, I would, I would take out. The purchase authorized, that's just the purchase of the five leased vehicles. I would remove, approve the purchase of 10 additional leased vehicles currently until we see those numbers.
So deleting the first two whereces on page 108?
Right. Right, and then under section two, remove purchase of ten additional leased vehicles, identified in attachment A.
Councilmember Howe, that gets you where you want to go and approve it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, really, I just want the resolution to say, we agree that we're going to purchase these vehicles from UFS. Uh, pretty much anything other than that is, is irrelevant until we see, well, it's not irrelevant, we need to see it, but.
Mr. Dixon, you okay with that?
Yes, I've made the notes and Lisa and I can make those adjustments prior to you signing the resolution if it's approved as amended.
Okay, with that, then I entertain motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash twelve, taking out the first two wherethes on page one eighteen of the packet and just below that, taking out the purchase of ten additional leased vehicle language.
So moved.
Second, thank you. I have a motion, say any further discussion?
So we're not purchasing the ten vehicles, is that correct?
It's not part of this resolution, that's the plan going forward, but this is a little too specific in here.
But will require additional information to come, is that correct?
Yes. Real couple, Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe? Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E, direction on feasibility study for a South Weber Area County Fire District. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor, and I know Chief Story's here, if he has, if you have any questions for him, um, just, I, I think you've been briefed on this in the past. Recent, I say recent, within the last six months or so, um, Riverdale City started, I don't know if they officially went out with an RFP, but started asking neighboring jurisdictions if they were, would be interested to take over their ambulance service. Over the past many years, off and on, we've had discussions about fire and EMS services, uh, paramedic services for the south end. Does it make sense, uh, to join, uh, in a district or, or work more collaboratively together to provide the service? When Riverdale started looking at their ambulance service and started asking, they asked our department, they asked Ogden, um, Roy, I, I assume, and maybe others, it naturally led to a discussion, at least between the city administrators, like, hey, do we want to revisit this conversation? Like, uh, we, we had this conversation a few years ago, as you recall, some of you may have been on the council at the time. Roy wasn't interested at, at that time, at least, so we were having conversations with Riverdale and Washington Terrace, and actually did have Zion's Bank do us a feasibility study for just those three cities, looking at, uh, what a fire district might look like. This time around, in talking with Roy Riverdale and Washington Terrace, uh, they all agreed, yes, we are interested and we think it makes sense to, to take a look at maybe, uh, what a, a district would look like for our jurisdictions. We've gone out and solicited a proposal from Louis Robertson and Burningham. They were, the, one of the reasons for them, not only are they very qualified, as, as many of you know, um, they were also the, uh, the firm that helped when the South Davis Fire District was formed. And I don't know how many years ago that was, but, uh, and I don't even know exactly the cities, but I think, uh, North Salt Lake, Woods Cross, Bountiful, uh, maybe Centerville as well, uh, where they did a very similar thing where in lieu of having their own departments, they did a feasibility study and elected to go to the district. With that, um, the proposal from Louis Robertson and Burningham, um, was roughly thirteen thousand dollars, uh, looking at my notes for the exact amount. In talking with, uh, the other cities, um, Washington Terrace are willing to provide their data so that we could incorporate their data into the analysis, but mentioned they probably weren't interested to help financially pay for the study itself. Whereas Roy Riverdale, uh, both indicated that they're on board and then we said, well, do we need some complicated formula to decide who pays how much? And they're just like, let's just cut it into thirds and pay for the study. So, that's where we're at. Chief, I'm going to give you some time, um, if you want to add to what I've said or correct anything I've said, please feel free. And if you as a council have questions of Chief Story, please.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Um, I, I don't have a ton to add. We have, we've, we've, we've talked and discussed things and, um, I think it would be appropriate and we, we would support continuing to look into this and see if the outcome would benefit the city and the, the, the citizens of South Ogden and the Terrace, Riverdale and Roy, if, you know, just to look at everything in general, we would support kind of diving into it further to see what the outcome would be, so.
I mean, the two million dollar ladder truck alone, it's like, okay, does South Ogden need a two million dollar ladder truck? Does Riverdale need a two million dollar ladder truck? Like, if we were a district, I don't know. Would, would a district have more than, than one ladder truck to cover those cities? Right, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of unknowns and when you talk amongst other colleagues in the area, um, there's agencies that have done it, north, you know, North Ogden, north, you know, south. Um, there's just a lot of unknowns with the group that's on the south end of what, what all those things would change and, and look like without, without kind of having a study to kind of show us whether there's a benefit or not. It's, it's kind of hard to dive into it and investigate it all.
But you do see one of the advantages is, and there's duplication of equipment or only one city has something, others, some city has something.
There's potential advantages, Mayor, there's, you know, personnel, staffing, safety concerns, running shorthanded, things like that, though, could fix with potentially having more staff on board across the, across the span here and things, but definitely benefits. Yeah, if you guys, I don't know if you have any other questions that I could try to answer.
So what's our, a third of thirteen thousand? So it's four, four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
That's for the study, is that right?
That would be our portion of the study. Yep, that's one-third of the cost of the study. And once we'd have that data, obviously then it would come back to us and the other cities to look at, say, hey, does this make sense? And there are different ways to structure these districts, um, some of you may, may be aware of that already. There are options, um, some are, some are, can be set up, and I think, uh, South Davis was, was initially set up this way where it's a fee district. Matter of fact, I think they're currently still, they're a hybrid, where a fee district would be every city just, we just write a check to the district every year. And, and it's just based on, based on some formula and on what our portion is. And then I think South Davis has transitioned to where they are, they actually are a taxing entity now, under that scenario, but I, I think they're a hybrid, I think they still have a, a fee from each city, and then they also have their own taxing authority for a portion of what their budget requires. Theoretically, if it were to become a taxing district, then South Ogden's property taxes would be lowered, at the same time the district would ha, implement their tax increase. Theoretically, that, it, it's that kind of a move where it's like, this is what we're, this is how we're going to, and administratively, there's different ways to structure how the district, what the oversight is. Obviously, a district has to have the oversight, especially if it has taxing authority of elected officials, so typically that's made up of the mayors, similar to other districts and boards. But there's also administrative levels that can be added to those districts. So, there's a lot of potential options, guess is what I'm getting at.
Next off.
Please.
Chief, if this was tried a few years ago, what, why did that fail and what's the expectation on this one? Why would this be any different?
Um, are you referring to the study that was done or just the?
Just creating a fire district in general. Is, is it the amount of cities that are coming in this time or, it sounds like now we're going to split it three ways, it's still three cities.
Do you want me to take that?
Yeah.
Cause I, just because I was here.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't here for that.
Just because I was here. So, the last time we looked at it, um, in lieu of jumping in and just creating a district, we felt like between us and Riverdale, that let's, um, we entered into an interlocal with them, basically giving our two chiefs the opportunity to, to work together almost like they were one department. So we, we actually had, I believe, some staff that went to their station and they had some staff here during certain times to cover based on call volumes. I believe if Chief West were here, he would state that we were seeing some pretty positive advantages coming from that. It did break down because of some of the personalities involved to where it became difficult because we were trying to operate as one, yet our personnel were our personnel and had to follow our policies and procedures and their personnel were their personnel. And sometimes the lines between, hey, you're the chief of those people, but you're not the chief of these people, that became a little bit of a challenge, to be honest. I think this time around, the difference being, um, there are some different people in certain administrative positions in the cities. The huge difference this time is that Roy is at the table and saying, we're very interested. They have an option, there are other departments in the area that could take over our service as well as Roy's service, and Roy is interested to look at this as a potential option that might be more worthwhile for them than some of the other options that are out there. Chief?
Is, is this more si- similar to Unified Fire that's in Salt Lake?
It would be, yes, it'd be the formation of a district, yeah.
And so we'd have the three cities, uh?
Four, Washington Terrace would be in there too.
Potentially, yeah, potentially.
But they, they're not paying for the study, are they?
No.
Okay.
They operate on a really, really small budget.
Yeah.
I said, the most important thing we need from you is your data because it wouldn't, well, it wouldn't make as, as good a sense to have a district and leave them on their own. They, and I will say this for them, back when we looked at this initially, they, don't quote me on these numbers, well, I'm not even going to put out numbers, what they were allocating as a city for their volunteer department, I think has almost tripled since then, where they have proactively as a city contributed much more in support of getting their department where they needed to be, to where I think in my conversations with my colleague there, I don't know, but it's my gut that the impact to them is going to be much less now than what it would have been then, because they've already on their own increased their spend on their department to where it's not going to be as significant. So, again, we won't know until we see the data, but my rough analysis says it, it could look favorable for all of us, but we won't know.
And there's the other things about ambulance service, paramedic service, if we're a district and other things like that that would benefit us that we're not getting right now. But this study will tell. Councilmember Stewart?
Um, what's the timeline that we're looking at?
There was a timeline in the proposal, I mean, we would want to move forward.
It has their tasks.
When it's there, um, it has tasks we didn't say. I would guess this study would take four or five months.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, these other, do we have the resolution before us tonight? Does Roy and Riverdale have to have a resolution with their council also to pass this? Yeah, or how's that work?
So at this point, we're just looking, I'm just looking for direction from you. I've, I've, prior to this meeting, well, last week, I've been in touch with my colleagues saying, hey, are you guys on board and are you ready to fund this? Should South Ogden's officials say, yes, we're on board as well? They, Roy and Riverdale both indicated they're ready to go. So, whatever process they've used to say, we're ready, they've indicated they're, they're ready.
From their city managers, is that right?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
Um, I, I think I should, someone, some, one of the entities would have to be the, the, the one that would enter the contract with Louis Robertson to do the study.
Yeah.
And so, the reason we're, we're not necessarily driving this as South Ogden, but we did initiate the conversation because I was a part of the conversation before. So I did say, look, one of us needs to step up and say, okay, if we're going to do the study, let's do it. So, the way we're planning to, to move this forward, South Ogden would contract with Louis Robertson, Burningham to do the study, and then we would invoice Roy and Riverdale for their portion of the study to help, and help pay for that, so. Versus Louis Robertson invoicing different cities, so. That's the, that's the plan at this point.
And we mocked it earlier, but, so you need head nods, really?
Yes.
I mean, really? Direction comes from there.
Direction would be.
If you want to verbalize it, but.
So, I guess we would have to eventually approve the agreement with Louis Robertson and Burningham, and so that would be the point where you'd actually approve it?
Yes, good point. With your nods tonight, we would have this on your next agenda. I would reach out to Louis Robertson and say, hey, we're good to go, let's get the contract together and it'll be on your next agenda for an official vote. Yeah, thank you, Lisa, I think that's.
So, we would be the agent that would carry the contract, that the, would the contract mention Riverdale and Roy in, in that agreement there?
Yes, yes.
And we'll get their money, we know where they live.
I, I think what we're looking at, Mayor, is, uh, what the fire, what the fire chief has indicated, that there are a lot of unanswered questions. And a feasibility study may answer a lot of those questions that we do not have answers for at the present time. Uh, and there is a possibility when we come to the end, they'll say, it's not feasible. And then we would not carry on with, with, with the district. But there is a, another resolution that would be, uh, looking at is that it would be feasible as, that way we're not duplicating, uh, resources from each of the cities. We're not multiplying our expenses by three, is what we're looking at.
Yes, correct. That's, that's the hope, is that the feasibility study shows there's a better way to do this that will allow less duplication of, of, uh, apparatus and infrastructure, administration, and for the same cost, instead of spending the money on duplicating those things, the, the money can be going to firefighters and EMS and, and the people that, you know, will be delivering more of the services. And the paramedic thing is, I think, a significant thing for us, because we've been, as a city, wanting our own paramedic services, where right now we're dependent on Ogden or Roy.
Have to pay them all the time.
We believe, well, I do, and I think chiefs have, have probably been the ones that have helped me understand this, that as a district with Roy, Riverdale, then most likely we would start to have the ability to have paramedics stationed in South Ogden, where we don't have to rely on them coming from, from Ogden. Chief, is that fair?
Yeah, I think that's fair to just, to say that that's a possible, that's a potential possibility, yeah, with everything.
The other aspect is that we would give better service to our citizens overall, hopefully.
That would be the motivation, that would be, that would, you know, worst-case scenario, Councilmember, uh, Stevens mentioned it, the worst-case scenario is we spend forty-five hundred dollars and realize we're just better off to keep our own department and run things the way we're running them. But there's also the potential where we could realize some really good efficiencies and cost savings for the, the citizens and deliver a, a higher quality of service.
Councilmember Stewart?
So, because we've been talking about the ladder truck, then I wonder, say we were to go, we won't know until we've done this study, right? But we should have the answer from the study by October? we won't know until we've done this study, right? But we should have the answer from the study by October, maybe?
Yeah, I can't imagine it taking six months, honestly, but, um...
Just because...
We'll mail them down and see for sure.
If there was a new entity formed by the time that the vehicle had to be paid for, then I wonder how that would affect us using ARPA money. But if we knew before December, then we would be able to have
Good point.
A educated conversation about it, right?
Yeah. And that would be an interesting part of this whole process. Like, how do you account for all of the current assets in each department and...
Well, for example, but Riverdale has the heavy rescue. I mean, so I think everybody has something that everybody else, will benefit everybody else, and it might be a perfect marriage and might find out it's not.
So just if they include that, make sure that they look at that as well as a piece of this. I mean, probably that...
In any contracted, like, any commitments they've previously made, we've gotta know from that from other cities as well.
Right.
Yeah, one, one of the first steps in, in something like this and the agreements would be a ba- basic inventory right off the bat to see what we're dealing with.
Okay. All right, anybody against our city paying forty-five hundred eighty-seven dollars for a feasibility study for fire, please voice your disapproval. Okay, there's your direction.
We'll move forward and get something ready for your official approval, uh, next meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Uh, item seven, discussion on moderate income housing. Mr. Dixon?
Oh, man, I thought we were done. I was kinda getting my mind right. Okay, what time is it? All right, where, where am I?
Talk fast.
Uh, yes, okay. Let me find my spreadsheet. So, uh, Lisa, can you project this or turn that on? No, no, I, I'll do it because I just needed you to turn it on. Thank you. Okay, let me just turn in connect. I apologize. I honestly forgot all about this, but I have it ready. It's here. I just, uh... Okay, so this conversation or this discussion item is, is based on a previous meeting where, uh, for some time now, the city's been trying to figure out, uh, what to do with the property on, uh, Fortieth and Evelyn. Um, and part of our interest is to look to see if that property could be used to the city's benefit in meeting some of our moderate income housing requirements, uh, from the state of Utah. Um, in one of the previous meetings, we, you know, we did mention we've worked with some students at Weaver State to design a, a small house plan. Yeah, thank you. Okay, I think we're getting close. So we worked with Weaver State to, uh, develop some house plans, uh, had a, a bid from an engineer. What, what is this telling me to do? Help!
Add some IT to the budget.
Some IT training, maybe. Okay, it says paired. Need to connect.
Gotta get Susan a spongy. Susan a better spongy.
Shoot, and I did not, uh, didn't make copies of this either, so if I can't connect. I don't know. Let me try.
Let's see this right here.
I'm on the right source, right? Let me give one more chance here.
Sitting on the sun. I don't act like it's been...
Come on.
The mini one? It's for you.
Okay. I apologize. Um, I guess, Lisa, can I print it from here into the courtroom? Yeah, you try that.
It's got a little just not as powerful. Sledgehammer?
Oh, man, what is going on? My whole computer is up. The heck? Okay. Um, Lisa, do you mind? I'm just gonna print it upstairs. Would you be okay to grab them? One, two, three, four, five, six. Well, my computer, I'm trying to go to the email. My computer's spinning. Okay, thank you. And I'll, I'll get going here. So Councilmember Howe made a good, a good comment during the last discussion on this, um, regarding, you know, what are we hoping to accomplish? Does it, does it make sense for us to try to build a home and sell it? And would we be further ahead to do that versus just sell the land? So I've done some work in trying to come up with some options and, uh, that might, that might help or make things even more difficult to figure out, but I'll let you decide.
That's always an option.
So first off, I started with affordability. So when we talk about affordable housing, you look at the area median income. So the area median income for this area, based on twenty, the most recent twenty-twenty-two data, is a household income of eighty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-five. That's the area median income. Eighty percent of that is sixty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. So to be affordable, um, to meet the state's affordability requirements for housing, your household income has to be at or below that eighty percent AMI, sixty-six, so roughly sixty-seven thousand a year. And no more than thirty percent of your household income can be spent on housing. So if you take thirty percent of sixty-seven thousand dollars, it's twenty, just a little over twenty thousand dollars a year, divide that by twelve, it's a monthly mortgage or rent, um, of sixteen hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So just under, you know, rounded to seventeen, seventeen hundred dollars a month. So now I carry that over. So that's, that's the target, right, is we need something that someone can afford. Um, so the top left-hand corner, that's the affordable housing data that I just went over, showing the sixteen hundred and sixty-nine dollars per month, um, for, for mortgage. So option, I've got three options. Option one, we build a home on the property, we deed restrict it at AMI for eighty percent of AMI, and we sell the home and roll the proceeds into the city's housing funds. So I set out to say, okay, can we do this? We have eighteen hundred dollars in engineering. Cost from my friend at Keer Corporation was around two hundred dollars a square foot for finished, for a finished floor. Originally, if you recall, the house plan was nine hundred square feet on the main and a nine hundred square foot unfinished basement. The unfinished basement cost, we just said, let's say that's a hundred dollars a square foot. To try and make this work to be affordable, I, we had to remove the basement. Right? So we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of construction cost for that. Councilmember Stewart, you had a question?
I just wondered, how did you come to the twenty thousand estimated land value?
Oh, I backed into that.
Oh, because you can't get a lot for that.
No, no, that's...
Is that how much the city paid for that?
No.
I was wondering how mu- do you know how much the city's into that lot for?
Do you remember? I don't remember. Well...
Well, only by the Fortieth, we had to buy some property. Was that part of the state bought it?
It, it was the federal funds, but I just wonder what we, what this, what, what it was purchased for. So so, yeah, Councilmember Stewart, what happens is I, I look at this and I say, okay, um, put that at zero. Like, let's say we give the land. Well, we basically don't try to get anything for the land. We just try to sell the home. So with twenty thousand dollars of land with a hundred and eighty thousand dollar home, we got a total of two hundred and one thousand dollars, right? Two hundred and two thousand dollars. Down below, you can see my mortgage estimate. On a two hundred thousand dollar home, ten thousand, assuming ten thousand dollars down, at six and a half percent for thirty years, that's, that's where I started to say, okay, in order to make this meet the affordability, we could probably only recoup twenty thousand dollars for the land value. Right, and things have, have probably changed. Again, if you see my, my little note at the bottom, this was using Zillow Mortgage Calculator online, so... So for whatever it's worth.
Ballparking's fine.
So option, yeah, and that's really what this was hop- hoping to accomplish. Option two, we just deed restrict the land and sell the land and let someone else build a home, but if we deed restrict it for affordability, now it's their problem to try and figure out, can I, as, as a contractor, can I build a home and sell it and meet the affordability requirements that have been placed on the land itself? So I looked at that scenario, which you can see, uh, first off, engineering and plans, I, I, I just assumed that'd be thirty-five hundred dollars. Because they'll have to have their own house plans and, and figure that out where obviously we, we have our house plans. Hundred and eighty thousand still for construction. But then a contractor typically gets twenty percent. Right? They build twenty percent profit margin on, on what they build. So when you look at that scenario, two hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, you go down below to the calculator and it's like, okay, that's, we're, we're almost there, you know? We're a little high at seventeen hundred, so maybe that option works, but again, what are we getting for the land? We're getting nothing. What's that? Without a basement. Nine hundred square feet, one level. I guess what I realized as I've been doing this, making it affordable is extremely difficult. Uh, and, and it's, it's gonna have to come at a cost to the city to say, to make it affordable, we're gonna give the land or contribute more to the construction. Option three is simply sell the land at current market rate. Someone could build a non-afford, like a market rate house. Um, I have had estimates from seventy-five thousand to a hundred and something thousand dollars for the land. And again, that's kinda tough to, to figure out. It's based on some property a developer recently purchased out in like West Haven because there's not a similar comp in this area for that size of land. So I'm putting it at, you know, maybe we could get seventy to a hundred thousand dollars for the land. What that could then do for us as a city, we would take that and we could roll that into our housing funds to bolster what we have available. It doesn't do much, though, to help us on our moderate income housing report, other than we could say we use this excess land and sold it so that we could bolster our housing funds to do something more. If that's the direction we decide to go, I think between now and our reporting period, August first, we would want to figure out, what are we gonna do with this money so that we have a little something more to report to the state, at least have a plan to say, this is what we wanna do with the money. I don't even know what that looks like. I'm still gonna research. Based on Steve's numbers, we have about two hundred thousand dollars right now in our housing fund. If we added another eighty-five to a hundred, we're close to three hundred thousand dollars. What can we do as a city to meet our moderate income housing strategies with three hundred thousand dollars to help affordable housing?
Councilmember Stewart?
Isn't this one of the things that we called out as this is something that we're doing as part of our moderate income housing report?
Yes.
So if we if we change it, then we have to be working somewhere else.
That's why I say, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with option three if we can have a concrete plan to, to help the state understand in our report. This is why we pivoted from building a house and deed restricting it or selling the land deed restricted to this plan. And I think it'd have to be a pretty, a, a pretty good argument to make to say, this is why we're doing this.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead, please.
Sorry, just one other. So we have five, but only three were approved, correct?
Right.
But the planning commission is working on having the other two check that box.
Correct. Well, at least get us compliant with the requirement, yes.
So even if we didn't have this or didn't do anything more, we'd still have four, possibly?
Yes, yes. Good point. Yes, thank you. Good point.
So, Matt, building a house was not one of our strategies.
No.
And I think that's to Councilmember Stewart's point. Out of the five, building a house and making a house moderate income eligible was not a strategy.
It wasn't a strategy, but it was a potential project.
It was, but it wasn't one of our five. So we're, we still have five, five strategies in that moderate income housing strategy.
But building a home was a part of one of those strategies.
And do you remember what the strategy was?
Uh, I can look it up quick in our plan.
Okay, so while you're looking that up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna
Okay.
ask another or make some more comments because I like to make comments. Taking eighty-five or a hundred thousand dollars and adding it to our housing fund. We could develop another strategy, actually, I think it's already in our strategies, about doing, um, loans or grants for down payments for moderate income qualifiers. You could ta- eh, eh, to, to Matt's math, which you're never gonna find a home for two hundred grand in South Ogden. It's just not gonna happen. But we could do a five percent or a, a, a down payment match or something like that on a three or four hundred thousand dollar home to help people get a more reasonable monthly payment, which qualifies as a strategy, and we can do them as loans. In fact, you could even, you can even charge interest on those loans if we wanted to be a bank. So the, and that was my concern when we first talked about this, Matt, was we, we can build a home for two hundred grand, but we can't sell it for three hundred grand. So there's our hundred thousand dollar loss. We just gave away a property for a hundred grand and just to meet one criteria on our moderate income housing strategies. We could take this hundred grand and sell the property and meet one criteria, but have it be perpetual. It could, it could last for as long as we have a housing fund.
Right. So to answer the, the question, six point one, is the state strategy demonstrate utilization of moderate income housing set aside, meaning the monies that we have through our CDRA from a community reinvestment agency, redevelopment agency or community development to create or subsidize moderate income housing. So within that strategy...
We're gonna create...
Even if we sold the property, we're filling that.
Right.
Because we're gonna use that money somewhere else. We're still using the RDA to, to get those funds to develop a new strategy and we meet six point one and we meet six point, where's the loan one? There was, there was one on there.
Sorry, which, so...
There was one about loans or grants.
Uh, that would maybe one of these. So the blue are the state strategies. And then the white are the things we've built underneath that strategy, you know, as far as what we're gonna do. So here's six, one, two, analyze property located for redevelopment to determine if it should be developed as a moderate income housing project.
Well, we analyzed it.
Yeah. That's part of what we're doing.
Yeah. Good information though, Matt. Thank you. We could do both.
We can. It's, I mean, we can stipulate it. The, the feasibility of that, though, I don't know. If I'm a, if I'm a contractor, I'm going, wait a minute. We've just proven it's gonna be hard to meet affordability and we're not gonna charge, have to charge twenty percent for our markup.
Yeah. Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The voice of reason and wisdom can always ask a question.
When you got that two hundred square feet or two hundred dollars per square foot amount, didn't that already incorporate the builder's twenty percent?
I, I, I don't know, to be honest, because I, I had two separate conversations. One was, what's the cost per square foot? And then on a different occasion, I said, what's the... And then, on a different occasion, I said, what's the typical markup? That's possible, Lisa. I'd need to verify that with him, cause you're right, it might be... Cause I didn't have that conversation together to realize, wait a minute, is that built in?
Cause it might be. I think, just off of history, and Councilmember Howard, you might be able to answer. That's if a contractor invests the money, and their, their typical markup would be that. If we have, if we're investing the money, if a contractor's building it, he's gonna charge an upcharge, right? He's gonna, he's gonna want his profit on top of that. Not, not just the building, but the profit for him having the investment. If the city pays for it, they wouldn't pay that, that markup.
But what you're saying, Lisa, is in option two here, that I have on the screen.
Yeah, you, you may not have to put the 36.
If it's built into the 200,000, $200 per square foot, the, the contractor's markup, then we could zero that. And now we're back to, okay, maybe we could get a little something for the land. I mean, we're back to scenario one almost, right? So, still, still a challenge.
I like, uh, Councilman Howard's comment is that if we build the property, we're giving it, we're, we're giving away 100,000 and, and that does not sit well. Is that if we sell the property, then we can use those funds and put in our housing to assist other housing, uh, projects that we have. The city is not designed to, to build homes and be in that type of a market, but...
That's what we keep telling the state.
But I, I would rather sell the property and run those, turn those funds into our housing, uh, program that we could use for additional housing programs that we would have. Instead of, if we sell the home, build it and sell it, we're getting, we're at a deficit of 100,000.
Councilmember Stewart?
I think if, if somebody knew, if, okay, if it was somebody that already knew how to do this, right? That knew how to use low income housing tax credits, right? Then they would know how to make it work out, right? But, that's not what the city does, so we don't know how to make it work out. So, I think, I think we're better off to try and let somebody who knows how to do it, make it work. Instead of us trying to figure out, like, how do we work this? We've never done it before. Turn it to somebody who knows how to do it.
Well, we do, and like, organizations like Habitat for Humanity, and, and those other organizations that build low income housing, uh, type of buildings, you know, they're, they're spec homes, they're not designed, you know, the way this student designed it. But, almost always, they're gifted the land. And that, that, to, to Doug's point, that doesn't sit well, it doesn't make us any money. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we're in it for the money, but we're in it for fulfilling an obligation. We're in it for making the best use of the city funds we have, or the city assets we have. And it's, it could be used for decades still, if we, if we did the loans and grants, right?
I like that idea to do, like what Councilmember Howe is suggesting. How hard would it be for us to implement, to, uh, be the, the, uh, loan provider, right? Like, that's not what we do either.
But, I agree, but there's programs that have been modeled that cities use. And, and we could do that, we could do, Zion's Bank would do it. I mean, they, they probably charge a small interest charge or whatever on top of it, but there's, there's ways to do that. We don't have to invent the wheel on this one.
Mayor, so, Councilmember Stewart gave me an idea on as, if the direction is, we know we're not gonna build a house, so now let's explore the best option to sell the property. I don't know, but to Councilmember Stewart's point, it's got me curious to go and, and float the, the land with individuals who'd build using low income tax credits, to say, could you make this work and still pay the city something for the land? We might be able to kill two birds with one stone. Get the deed restriction, because they might know how to still make it work through the tax credits. I don't know, that might be, but at least, at least we might understand, well, we could still deed restrict it, sell it to someone who builds low income housing, and still get 50,000 for the land. Or do we wanna sell it for 85 and not have the benefit of the deed restriction? Like, at least give more options. So, I guess my thoughts tonight would be, with your support, I will move forward in looking at, what are the options we have to sell the land? Can we still meet the moderate income housing thing through a Lytec home builder? I don't know, I'd be curious to, to have that conversation. Or just have it appraised and sell it for fair market value.
You know, I was gonna bring this up in my report from my St. George meetings, but the one on affordable housing talked about, you know, some cities use smaller lots, but then they build these giant houses. And we need to go back to the 1950s on some of these lots, where you build a three bedroom, one or two bath, 900 square foot carport house, that, it's exactly what I started in. When he said that, I was like, hey, he's been to my house. You know, and then you just, and then you get some equity and you, and you move up. So, it doesn't have to be, it can be a small home. I, I think it can still work for either us or a builder, you say, make it work. The other house on that street are small, it's not like it's gonna stick out. Not everybody has to have, you know, it's like, him forbid kids have to share a room anymore. It's like, no, you can't do that, it's 2024. You know, but, you have a carport and you have a small house and you start there. It's a starter home. And people can get some equity and work your way up, and that's how the middle class was made, so. I don't know. I think it could still make it work. E- eith- either way, somebody could build a, a small house there. But, we can get out of the business ourselves, if you will.
Wasn't that 1,200 square feet? Wasn't the drawings 1,200 square feet?
Did it ever reduce it to 900?
It might have been, I can't remember. It could have been, yeah, yeah, it could have been that.
I think at one point, it was 1,200.
Yeah.
But then...
That's still a pretty small house, I mean, it's still a, but it's for that lot.
I saw in one of the magazines that I get back east, they're building these miniature homes. And on this lot that was small, they built a miniature home that was two story. And it was really nice.
We had them present that one time, like those two.
Yeah. Yeah, those were, those are like 600 or 700 square feet, when they're two stories like that.
I was simply gonna say, I, I would be in support of floating both ideas, seeing what a builder could actually do, that, you know, maybe utilizes some funding or whatnot. I, and then just what you could get for selling the lot. I, I, I personally think that, I mean, in talking to appraisers, it was very difficult, as you, as you pointed out, that there's really not anything to compare it to. So, the number is hard to come up with. And I think, you know, there, you could put a price tag or whatever you guys wanted to put on the, on the lot, that would be fair. But, I'd, I'd like to see what both those options come back looking like. And, and, and if we sold it, then do exactly what Councilmember Howe said, and just generate a fund. But I did, I say, if you sell the lot, you just sell the lot, you don't... You, you, you walk away from it, you don't put...
Live next door to it that wanna buy that piece of property?
Didn't that guy come in one time and talk about that?
I don't know if he wanted the whole property or just a portion.
Cause that's an option.
Well, the challenge there would be, is he willing to pay fair market value?
Right.
I don't know, would his intention be to build a home on it? If his intention is just to have a bigger yard, it'd be like, wow, you're gonna spend a lot of money to have a bigger yard. Because the market would say, we can build a house on there, so the value of the land is gonna be...
He wanted to build something else. He wanted to buy the property and build something else on it.
Yeah, maybe, maybe they would be there.
Yeah, he wanted to build bigger and then use that for something else.
Makes sense.
Well, I'm all for selling the property.
You've muddied the water enough for you, you're good.
All right, are you as a council comfortable with me, I'm gonna explore the two options, just the fair market value, and then I'd love to see if we could find a Lytec home builder that would be willing to, that could figure out a way to make it work, and say, yeah, sure, we could, we could do that. And still give us, get us something for the land.
Some of those guys have better ideas than we do, so.
Yeah, well, they do it every day, right? They, they understand it.
Okay.
Can I ask another question?
Nope.
It's not directly related to Evelyn, but don't we own another skinny piece of land across the street from that?
Very skinny, narrow, yep. Between the...
It's like 10 feet, isn't it, or something?
It's very narrow, it's between, uh, the ga, the old gas station and the chiropractor. There's a little piece right there. Maybe a thought to sell that as well, and roll that into our housing fund.
There you go. A doghouse.
Well, it, it likely would go to one of the neighboring property owners. Mayor, I think I have enough direction on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, reports direction, city manager, we'll just go from, uh, east to west. Councilmember Howe?
I've got nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Smythe?
I just wanted to congratulate, Councilman Howard for the article in the, in the newsletter. He's right up my alley with that, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And it's more than 200 words.
Stretching the truth. Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks, I don't have anything tonight.
Councilmember Howard?
I'll follow suit with everyone else.
Congratulations.
I have a few suggestions. Um, I was thinking about South Ogden Days, and I was looking on TV at, uh, where Payson did a, a project with that, uh, uh, film star that they had down there when they made the movie. And they had a, a, a project that was in his, uh,
His charity?
Charity. I, uh, approached the mayor and gave him an idea that during South Ogden Days, why don't we make there somehow a food drive, where those who are coming to South Ogden Days, if, if they could, uh, bring a non-perishable, uh, item, then we could donate it to the Catholic services for their food services. So, the other, so that would be one. The other idea I had, I, I, I have a feeling that there are some misunderstandings and, um, they do not know exactly, uh, misgivings of what fiber is. Uh, I had a, uh, individual that was, she was 86 years old and she was concerned that people were gonna come in the yard and, and, and tear it up. And I, I went over to and talked to her and, and, uh, they're not gonna do that. But, there are some misgivings of what fiber and how they're gonna operate in that aspect there. And then when I was in, uh, St. George, the main topic, one of the main topics was planning for, uh, the Olympics in 2020, uh, 2034. We as a council needs to maybe look at that and how we want to start planning, for our city for 2020, 2034 and the Olympics. I think, uh, we, some of us may not be around in that, when that happens, but at least we've set the foundation of what, uh, how they involve the citizens and also some of the, uh, businesses, the economic situations that we have here in the city. So, those are the ideas that I had, uh, to pass on. The other thing is that, um, I attended the mid, mid-year conference there in St. George, and there were four themes that they emphasized. Number one was water, how to take care of the water and how to conserve and, and help the great Salt Lake. The other one was housing, we talked about that. The other one is communications. Not only communications with our legislators, but also our citizens, and how to diffuse some of the conflicts that we may have. And then also, they talked about, uh, what the state is gonna look like in 2034. We had an Olympian talk to us. She was a skeeter. And, uh, she says she's going down this track at 90 miles an hour and about an inch off the, off the ice. And she gave several aspects that I try to, that I'm gonna try to implement as a council member. First of all, she says to be a successful racer, you have to be relaxed, keep your form, and don't panic. Going down 90 miles an hour on a track, that would, that would probably cure me. But I also picked up a couple. Visualize what your dream is. And the other one is, she says, I try to find a spot so that I can think, plan, and that it's quiet. And the other thing is, is that, uh, she tries to visualize what she wants to accomplish. And I thought those were very, uh, emphatic, uh, items that I could implement as a council member here in, in, uh, South Ogden. I need to relax, I need to keep my, keep my form. That is mean that I gather the information and, uh, understand what's being presented. And most important of all, don't panic. There's always an answer to, to all of our questions and then visualize what we wanna do. In the paper, or on the news this last couple of days, I wanna send my, and I'm sure all of us want to send our condolences and prayers to the Sergeant William Hooser family. It brought to my mind, uh, the importance and the danger that some of our police officers are entrusted, that we entrust in them to help us keep us safe, our firefighters, that most, and, and I'm grateful for both the police and the fire. But also, I'm also grateful for the city employees, uh, the commitment that they have and, and the things like that. Many times I've envisioned that if our police officers, if the police officer goes out his front door in the morning, I want him to come back through that door in the evening. And, uh, but I'm grateful not only for our police officers, our firefighters, but also for our city employees. We've, we're, uh, I'm grateful for the people that we have, the directors and the employees that they, uh, work with. We're, we're fortunate in South Ogden to have that type of commitment from our, uh, city employees. And that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you, Councilmember Stevens. Can speak for all of the employees, that they, they feel all of your support as elected officials. There's a really good feeling in the city and the employees. They know that you as an elected official support them, absolutely, and so, uh, thank you. Um, just a couple of quick items for the sake of time. You are aware that our communications and events coordinator, uh, recently resigned. And, we are happy to report that we have made a job offer and it's been accepted. Her name is Danielle Ben D'Nelly. Did I get that right, Doug? And, um, she came to two separate interviews, has a very impressive resume. Very, uh, excited about, um, she will start on Monday. And, um, has local ties, she's a resident, I believe, of South Ogden and has a lot of, uh, great ties to this, the Weber County area. She worked for us a few years over at the Ogden Golf and Country Club. Not recently, but a few years back, and, um, still has a lot of those relationships and, and things. So, uh, very excited about, uh, about Danielle and her willingness to, to accept that job. Um, it was mentioned in the work session that Mr. Lebersbach has, uh, tendered his intent to retire. Um, in talking with Mr. Lebersbach, he's, um, graciously agreed to stay on while we recruit and train the next finance director. And so, he'll still be with us for a number of, of months, depending on how long that, that takes. But the job has been posted and it's, it's out there. And so, uh, tough shoes to fill. Uh, those of you who have worked with Steve and know Steve, um, he's done... he's done a tremendous job and knows where every, every penny goes in the, in the city and, uh, will definitely be, be a challenge to replace him. But, um, grateful that he's been willing to not just say, I'm ready to retire. Here's my two weeks. Uh, it's like, no, don't do that. So I'm very grateful that he's been willing to say, yeah, I'll, I'll stay on and train the next person. So, um, I think I may have mentioned this, but just the skate park groundbreaking. Waiting to try and get a date from, from them when they'll be here. They're waiting for the steel. All the steel around the whole park is, is in the process of being fabricated. They said within the next two to three weeks, that should be done. And then he goes, then we're, we're gonna mobilize. We'll be ready. So we do intend to have a groundbreaking, waiting to try and get that scheduled when they know they'll be here to, to officially break ground. So stay tuned for that. There's your update on, on the groundbreaking. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll pick a nice weather day. No, it's been terrible. Uh, so I missed the five o'clock work session. They had a farewell. Thank you and roast for Leanne Povey who's retiring from Bonded Communities That Care. She went to Riverdale Rec and said a few words there and and then we're doing interviews tomorrow, myself, Mayor Mitchell, a couple others will be on interview. There's some good candidates to replace her. So hopefully we can keep Bonded Communities That Care going as well as it has been. Uh, Mr. Dixon put together a letter and I added my edits that I've taken around to the grocery stores and the convenience stores as a response to our youth doing their environmental scan and their survey to tell them, you know, thank you for what you're doing to try to keep alcohol out of the minors' hands. And, and that's, that's been well received. I, I know a few of the owners already, but it was good to meet some others. So that's, uh, almost finished. Uh, St. George, I thought, the Utah League of Cities in Town Conference, one of the best, uh, one of the better ones. Just report a couple items that I went to. Went to one that talked about public comment and the First Amendment and what you can and can't do to people. And it raised a few questions on, uh, some funny YouTube videos if you guys ever think our, our meetings aren't as exciting as they should be. But we, we're gonna, we need to look at that and just make sure some of our wording is, is good and, uh, just so that we don't violate someone's First Amendment right. But also we have rights too and what people can and can't do. So that was quite interesting. Uh, went to one about social media, problems with posting city stuff on your personal pages. You know, just throw out some city announcement in between all your pictures of your grandkids and then someone comments and says something and you try to delete that or block that person. We got First Amendment issues there too. So that's why even Pinesos haven't posted much in the last five or six years since I've been scared out of that. But affordable housing I mentioned. And then, uh, also a really good discussion. They put us in, in a caucus of similar size and types of cities. And they asked about what we thought the legislature should, legislator should know, some of the concerns we had. Thought that was very productive. And a lot of mayors out there think in the same way, having some of the same concerns that we are. So I thought it was really, really good. And I think that's it. Uh, I will bring up fiber in our next, uh, once Danielle gets in, gets her feet under her, we'll, I'll do another video update and we'll send some information out and I'll include the fiber, some fiber information on that. And other than that, appreciate everybody's time tonight. It's been a long night. Thank you. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you all in favor.